The September 28th meeting of the Brookline School Committee. Our ranks are a little thinned out tonight because four of our members, school committee members Helen Charlebsky, Ben Chang, and Beth Jackson Stram, as well as Maddie Nagler, our Brookline High School representative, are all called away on business and are unable to be with us here tonight. But we do have a quorum, and let's get started. Our calendar is up on the wall, and there is a new addition that I want to draw everyone's attention to. On October 3rd, there will be a joint meeting of this board, the school committee and the Board of Selectmen upstairs on the sixth floor in the Selectmen's Hearing Room at 6:00 PM, and that will include a presentation on the preliminary study that's been done of adding an additional site to the search or the efforts to build a ninth elementary school in Brookline. So that will be presented to the public on the evening of the 3rd. We have various subcommittee meetings coming up. We have the next school committee meeting, which is on a Tuesday instead of a Thursday. It's October 10th. And we have some wonderful community events that you can see down at the bottom, starting off with the Brooklyn Education Foundation's Metzger Fellows Event at the Lincoln School on October 13th. Is there anyone, anything else that anybody wants to draw our attention to on the calendar? Thank you. We have on the consent agenda, the past record of September 14th. We have acceptance of funds from the D. Blakely Hor Trust, a generous contribution for the Brookline, use for Brookline High School. And we have two change orders for the devotion school building project, a credit change order in the amount of $32,810 and a cost change order in the amount, change order in the amount of $45,925. The Chair of our Capitol Subcommittee, Helen Charlebsky, has already reviewed these and signed these, as have the, both the Building Commission and the Board of Selectmen. So I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Ms. Scotto, is there a second? Ms. Nikov, thank you very much. All in favor? That is unanimous. Okay, we have now public comment, which is the time when we listen if there are members of the public who would like to speak with us, and there is no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comment at this time? Seeing no one coming forward, we will now welcome our visitors from the Chinese exchange program, Mr. Lantos.
Greetings, school committee members and Superintendent Bott. It's my honor and privilege to introduce the 18th year of our exchange program group, and you don't want to hear me talk, so I'm going to introduce their teacher, Ms. Shen Wei. She's got some words, and then maybe at the end I can say a few words.
Thank you, thank you. I even get the red paper here not too long, you know? So that's okay. Dear Brookline High Committee and Superinsistent Butt, and dear host families and dear students, I'm so glad to stand here and share my thoughts with everyone. My students and I have been in Brookline for over 20 days, and every morning now and every day, the friendly, the friendly, I should say, the kind family members, the friendly classmates and teachers, the blue sky, and even the lovely squirrels make us so excited. That's true, that's true, you know? And, and thank you so much. And I can't believe that this program has lasted for 18 years. It's really a long time, and most of my students are just 15 years old. So this program is even older than the students here. It's amazing. And I want to say, I want to say thank you to this exchange program. Now, before we went here, we knew about America from novels and films, and now we come here and realize and get to know America here, that this time, and I think it's amazing. And I think this program is just like a bridge connect Brookline High School and Gaoxing Number One High School, but also connects China and America. I think it's important. And since we met our family members in the airport, we were deeply moved by their kindness. And up to now, every day, everyone is showing us American kindness and warmth. It's good. We feel so comfortable. And I really want to say thank you to the host families. Now, it's hard for you to be with the students because the difference between China and America is quite different, and it's need time to accept, to understand one another. But just 20 days, more than 20 days, I find that some of the students is even get taller and taller. It's amazing, you know? That's true. And, you know, after class, everyone, every Chinese student may, may meet me at number 200 classroom, and their topic is always about their host parents and host brothers and sisters, you know? Thank you so much. And I also want to say thank, say thanks to Steve. Now, because of him, we never feel worried, because we know no matter what happens, he will come here and help us. And I also want to say the students and the teachers here in Brookline High School, their attitudes shows us that we are from the same family, that is the earth. It's great. So in the end, I'm going to read, I'm going to read a sentence from President Kennedy. Now, he spoke it in 1963. Now, that is, "Not merely peace for Americans, but peace for all men and women. Not merely peace in our time, but peace in all time." I think that's what the program is showing to everyone. We will appreciate it. Thank you very much. This is my student called Liu Yuhang. Introduce yourself first.
Yes. Hello, everyone. My Chinese name is Liu Yuhang, and my English name is Caroline. And, yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm Caroline Liu. It is my great honor to give you a speech here. Three weeks passed, I'm getting used to BHS and life in Boston. It's inannerable that I tried something for the first time. Like, the first time I had a math class all in English, the first time I had to run to another classroom in only five minutes, the first time, the first time I experienced Jewish ceremonies, the first time I went to the cinema to see a movie without Chinese subtitles. It's true that some things made me really confused and lose my confidence, but when I looked up, I found you all accompanied me. When I couldn't understand the Great Gatsby, Mom explained it to me so I could understand better. When I had problems with my work and life, Sister helped me to, Sister helped me figure them out. Also, my classmates, even we were unfamiliar, they still care about me and helped me with my classwork. Also, my seven Chinese classmates, they still cared about me and helped, uh, we always faced the difficulties together, and I really learned a lot from them. And teachers, Catherine, Steve, and other patient teachers, they do give me useful advice and made me life better. Thank you all, and also thanks to the officers who support this program, which lets me have a new life. There is a saying on the wall of JFK Museum, "All this will not be finished in the first 100 days, nor will it be finished in the first 1,000 days, nor in the life of this administration, nor even perhaps in our lifetime on this planet. But let us begin. Let us begin. Don't be afraid, because we are all accompanying at one another. Thank a lot for giving me a chance to freshen my feelings. Thank you."
And next, it's also my student, of course, my student Zhao Chengguang.
Yeah, hello, everyone. My Chinese name is Zhao Chengguang, and my English name is Aaron. So it's my great honor to give you a speech here. Today is the 24th day since we got here. First of all, I want to thank my host family. They are so nice, and they always make me feel at home. Everything is perfect, especially the film made by, made by Mom. I love it. Yeah. Also, I want to, I want to thank my teachers. They are very patient and nice. I have so many problems on language, and they always expand them to me until my understand, until I understand. After that, I want to thank Mr. Lantos especially. He led us to so many places, great places, and worked as a guide. I learned about America a lot from him. So far, the most influential thing for me is the devotion of everyone around. They always put their heart into everything, like my host brother Nick. He plays basketball every afternoon, no matter how much homework he has. Yeah. He spends two hours every day at BU playing basketball. When I play with him, if he may not, if he doesn't shoot in, he will get mad. I'm, I'm so impressed by his commitment. So far, everything is perfect. Again, thank all of you very much.
And this is my student, Zhang Yiyang.
So distinguished officials, school faculties, host families, and friends, I'm Karen Zhang. It's my great honor to speak here on behalf of our group. Firstly, I'd like to begin today by expressing my gratitude to my beautiful mother, Suzanne, and my cutest and lovest and sweetest dad, Bob, and my great siblings, Jake, Gabby, and Livy, for devoting their time without any compliance, to our kind teachers who helped us, who helped us with great patience, and to Mr. Steve Lantos for your fabulous guidance and profound knowledge, and also for Ms. Shen for her caring and inspiration. So when I was drafting my speech, the first word emerging in my mind was diversity. Here in Brookline, I learned diversity is power. You could never tell a person's cultural background, religion, value, or sexual orientation, but you could always tell from the smile on their faces that their life is filled with euphoria and hope. Just as how Aristotle and Dante discovered the secret of the universe, everyone's life has been an adventure, and adventures come, come together to generate progress. Here, I learned to open my eyes and heart to different possibilities of life and embrace the diversity that really matters. So when there is error, we may bring truth. When there is hatred, we may bring love. We, the people, stand together, cherishing our diversity and freedom, and take our responsibility and I believe a brighter future is just ahead of us. Thank you all for listening. Have a good day.
Are these kids amazing?
I want to also just say that in the years that I've been doing this work, that I just come to realize that it, 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 everything is about the host families, both on our end here in Brookline and also on the other end in Xian around the Gaoxing School. So I just want to publicly acknowledge and say thank you to the host families this year. And if I could just acknowledge also the group who we've selected, the host families are the families whose children in the, at the high school will be going to China in the spring. So I just want to ask the eight students who will be going to China around February 1st and their teacher, Ms. Stacy Kissel, if you could all just please stand. This is a great, great group, and I think I have the best job in, in the public schools of Brookline, because I get to bring these peoples together. So if there are any questions or comments?
Ms. Scotto.
Meanwhile, wojiao scotto lao shu. Now, that's all the Chinese I know, I'm sorry. But I, what I do want to say is that this program is 18 years old, and I went to the Gaoxing School before the program started, the year before, and I've been a couple of times since then and worked with some teachers. You are talking tonight about how friendly and how outgoing everyone is in Brookline. I can tell you that the Gaoxing School is exactly the same way. People welcomed us, people talked with us, they showed us what we didn't know, and they showed us a wonderful system of education that you have at your school in Xian. I'm delighted that you're enjoying your stay in Brookline. I think there is nothing better for learning about the world than having exposure to culture and being with other people from different places that are, that are entirely unlike the place that you come from. I hope you enjoy your stay here. We are delighted to be hosting you in Brookline. This program is one of the, the real, I think, stars in, in the Brookline group of what we do well, and I think the same thing is true for the Gaoxing School. So thank you for coming. I hope your year here, your year, your, your four months here is wonderful, your four months are wonderful, and that you go back to the Gaoxing School and understand that you have friends in Brookline that I know you will have all your life. So thank you for coming.
And I think finally to Ms. Scotto's point, we hope to organize a trip in the spring with some of you, hopefully to go, be able to go and see the Gaoxing School 20 years later, and also meet and see both the Chinese students here and our students as they're living and learning in Xian.
Thank you so much. And thank you all for coming, spending time with us this evening, and we-
We'd love to stay, but we're going to run over to back-to-school night at the high school.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a presentation from Deputy Superintendent Dunn and Matt Gillis, Director of Operations and Facilities.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matthew Gillis. I'm the Director of Operations for the School Department. Boy, that's a tough act to follow. To steal a line from one of the students, I'm not sure this will be filled with euphoria and hope, but I hope to get us there. We had an internal school facility assessment largely done by myself and Joe Connolly last year. We're combining that information with our enrollment projection, as well as what we've been looking at for the high school and the ninth school. So this report is actually going to go in an order that might not seem like it was thought out, but there is pretty much a symbiotic relationship between some of the things that we're asking for or requesting, that as things affect, happen to one building, somehow it can have a positive effect on another building at the same time. The arrow isn't working.
That's a burst.
Looks like it's frozen up at the moment. All right, I'm going to reset that. So the first thing that I'll be showing everybody is kind of a comparison to what we have for classroom sections right now with what we had last year, what we, what we're going to need the next few years based on our enrollment projection going across schools. We're still using the FY17 enrollment projection because the official number that we work with all year has not been finalized. It's called the October 1 enrollment count. This is the sheet I'll be looking at. And basically, the Department of Education gives everybody in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts till October 31st to make sure that their enrollment on October 1st is finalized. So all the changes for students that move in and out and all the withdrawals, you have an entire month to get that right. If you looked at enrollment at any given time in the month of September, it always seems to be changing as we've got new kids coming in all the time, and withdrawals don't always happen right away. Sometimes you find out after the child has actually left. So with that being said, if you, and I know folks at home may not be able to see this, but going across the top, you can see what our enrollment, actual enrollment was for FY17 and our 18 projected enrollment, which is really pretty close to what we thought it was going to be for the most part. And then how many sections are available at each school? And right now, fiscal '18, we have 268 classrooms needed, and we've made 268 classrooms available. We, we do that through modifying rooms and sometimes splitting old big rooms over the years into classroom space, or moving things around, or flat-out renting space like we do at Pierce. So if we didn't have some of those things, that number would actually be a little less. But in the short term, we make it work. For fiscal '19, New Devotion should be coming online, and I'll give you a little good news that I got Tuesday from Tony Gueily at a job meeting. The project is still on schedule, and it's almost half-constructed. Things are looking pretty good, and I think everybody's going to be very excited about the New Devotion School. So we'll be adding classrooms. That'll be a full five-section school as designed, and next year will be at 270 classrooms. In fiscal '20, things start to get tight. In fiscal '21, starts to get very tight. It shows we're short approximately 18 classrooms if we keep the do-nothing approach, but we have leases that, you know, would be expiring, and the do-nothing approach doesn't seem to work when we know we already have students that are in school already in our retention levels from the enrollment projection, which is still on the website if folks wanted to see it, project us going further forward. So I'll move into the high school.
Next, do you have questions on the line?
Yeah, we can take questions on this one.
Let me just ask one, and then I'm sure we can go. What was the methodology behind assigning children to schools? So clearly, when we get birth rate data, isn't it at the district level?
So-
How do we decide what school they're getting assigned to?
If you want to.
So this is based on, in the enrollment report, we actually have enrollment projections by school based on the population. So we did a survival cohort model. So what Matt and Joe did with the enrollment is we took the building, each buildings, like Baker School had a projection for 10 years. We took that, and that's what was plotted out in terms of the classrooms needed.
Right, sorry. So how were we get, maybe I'm just not remembering, and I apologize, from the enrollment, how do we decide how-
We didn't do any placement or changes of any students. We assumed every, we assumed what the enrollment, we just, we didn't assume any reassignment in the enrollment report. We need to reassign. That is one of the outcomes of the enrollment report, but we didn't actually, we couldn't actually reassign. We don't know who those students are.
Right, and because we don't know who they are, how did we decide, like, we have some number of kids who were born, whatever, four years ago, and they're going to be showing up in one or two years, right? So, so how did we assign which building they were going to show up in?
Historic, it's the historic-
So kind of proportionally into their size?
It's whatever the historic proportion, proportion is according to that building.
So we basically said that, you know, Baker is X percent of the overall district, and so for any given year, we're going to assign X percent of the kindergarteners to Baker. Okay, got it. Thank you.
And just to-
Sorry, I had, I'm just, I had a couple other questions. On the note, on the screen, the second note, the classroom shortage is not reflected above, are those what we consider to be substandard classrooms, or is that referring to something?
Yes, so substandard classrooms, as well as Pierce would be a lease. Lawrence and Heath, Driscoll, some substandard classrooms, Baker, also substandard in size, and modulars. They're lease purchases, but they're, whenever we have these add-ons over time, as we'll get into the presentation a little more, it'll show up some deficiencies with the building. And like, the prime example that seems to be reoccurring in all the buildings is, is the lunchroom. You know, as we've expanded classrooms and added more students, when the building was originally built and designed, it had one number of students in mind, we'll call it 500. If we now have 600 or 650 kids, that cramps the lunchroom, and so we have to have more lunches and spread them out a little longer.
And I don't, I don't know if you, if you know this or other folks remember, what is our, our total, what are we projecting our total need to be for classrooms, including the substandards? Do we, do we, I just don't remember what that number is.
That, that number is, is there.
That's included in the, that is.
That's included there, but-
Oh, okay.
You know, in, in advocating for, you know, everybody to have a right-sized, standard-sized classroom, in not leasing space like the third-floor Pierce loft in particular, you know, that, that number would be higher. But we are making it work as, as best we can with expanding place, for lack of a, lack of another way to say it.
So, but so there is, there, we could come up with a number that it would add on to that 18 in fiscal '21, the, a number of additional new classrooms we need in order to balance the communal facilities at Pierce, for example-
That number would be 23 Pierce.
-with the number of classrooms, because the, the number of classrooms at-
Just at Pierce right now.
-Pierce would go down, and the 18 would go up, and so the-
So instead of actually having 270 if we weren't leasing space? So instead of actually having 270 if we weren't leasing space, we would have 265. So that number would be 23.
Just for, it would go from 18 to 23 to, to address the rentals at Pierce and then if you go building by building by building, it goes up from the 23 by an increment and an increment and an increment all the way through all eight schools.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted, I couldn't remember what that total number was.
This projection I kept largely intact from last year. The only thing I changed was the classrooms available because we did add four or five classrooms this summer to make, make everything, make everything fit. And can we continue to do that? Maybe to some extent. We're not going to be able to continue to keep doing that and making things work. Lawrence, for example, we had a room off the media center that we've converted into a, into a classroom. It's a bit smaller, but you know, we're making that, we're making that work.
One other question if I may.
Sure.
Do you know offhand the split between the number of classes in upper Devo and lower Devo?
Um-
If you don't, it's-
No, actually I brought some information up in case I get asked that. So, did you want to know how many sections there are in upper Devo and lower Devo?
Uh, yeah.
So there's a total of 43 sections. It's five sections kindergarten through six. Grade seven and eight are both four sections apiece. So there's the 43 sections and the New Devotion will be built for 45. That's-
Thank you.
That's a little foreshadowing for where we'll get to in a, in a little bit.
We have more questions.
Oh, okay.
So that was my question, actually. So with the New Devotion, will there be a net new number of classrooms or is the same number?
No, we're going to add two classrooms, so-
Just two?
Yes. So you see us go from 268 to 270.
So that's taking the number of classrooms, the cumulative number of classrooms at upper and lower, lower Devo today and it's two additional, which is a different number than how many classrooms there were at the devotion building before the renovation project and how many after.
So how many classrooms will be in the New Devotion after the renovation or with the New Devotion?
There's, there's 45, there's a full five sections per grade times nine grades plus two early education classrooms.
Forty-five plus two.
Forty-five classrooms.
It, it, right, compared with where we were, compared with where we were before the building was enlarged.
There are two different, there are two different ways to answer your question. One way to answer your question is how many sections were in the building when they moved out?
Okay.
And the other way to ans, actually, there are three. One is, that's one. How many were in the building when they moved out? The other one, the second one is how many are currently operating across the two buildings? The third one is how many are we moving into? And I think the, the difference between, well, then, then there's another one, which is how many were substandard, I mean, how many were substandard that were taking places in hallways or in music rooms or whatever?
The 12, the 12 is, is if you counted real classrooms before we did the project, there's 12 more real classrooms in the New Devotion than there were, but that's, that's not counting students or sections. That's just like what the building actually-
It's like physical classrooms, but we were, but, but the reason that it's not a net 12 is because some of those classrooms were taking place in other rooms, like the auditor, in music in the auditorium, that should have been a classroom, but it wasn't. So I think the net was like five, wasn't it? The net was far smaller than 12. But, yes. Can I ask a different question about this one?
Sure.
So, just so I'm clear, if we were to look across the 264, sorry, 268 this year, how many would we consider educationally substandard? Meaning, it's under, it's my understanding that we're in rental spaces, but they're working perfectly fine as educational spaces. They just happen to be rentals, not owned. But there are others, at least there were, where you have to walk through one active classroom to get to another active classroom or whatever it is, where it's actually impacting the education. So one is, so I guess the, part of my question is, if we were to kind of get rid of the ones that sort of really aren't working educationally, how many, how much of that is in here?
I'd have to actually go count them up because I didn't actually do that for, for this exercise. And some of the ones that are working are below 850 square feet. So they might be in 675 square feet and so we try to keep those smaller rooms with a smaller class size. So it's not, it's not meeting the current standard, but we're not operating in a way where it, the, the room becomes an impediment to the delivery of the curriculum.
Because my sense is, is that this 18 classrooms, 17, 18 classrooms understates-
Right, that-
-what we need.
There's another calculation about counting functional classrooms today, which is some of the rooms we're using as, that falls into a middle ground with the cafeteria and the gym and the auditorium and the library, insufficiency for the number of students, is that we converted a lot of programmatic spaces that weren't classrooms, but they were serving, you know, guidance or, you know, they were, they were serving other programmatic functions, support functions, and we've crammed those into, into substandard spaces to make a classroom. So we, we also have to recoup those spaces which would displace classrooms.
I guess, and part of where I'm going with this is if I see 17 or 18, that tells me we don't need to be building a four-section school, when in fact, that's not our, like, that's not actually right. See what I mean? If, if the number were truly 17 or 18 classrooms, we would not build a four-section school. So I just want us to be really thoughtful about when we say like what we need to build for, we just need to understand that this is a piece of the picture and there are other pieces that we have to make clear aren't actually working education, just because children are in them does not mean they are working educationally. Does that make sense?
I agree. It doesn't necessarily mean it's working well. In the, the spirit of keeping what the document was, I didn't want to start altering it all or start changing the enrollment projection. And if you're fitting them into spaces now, you know, are you going to immediately stop doing that? If, if no other alternative was available and we had to stop, yes, but in some cases, we, we don't have to stop, but there's an additional, additional cost to that. But what we can't control is the number of students that seem to keep coming into the district.
Yes, I guess all I'm suggesting is that without a page behind this to explain, and there are another dozen or whatever that are not working, either because it's forcing lunches at 10:15 in the morning or because it's pushing 14 of our classes above our class size guidelines, or because you have to work, walk through one active classroom to get to another classroom and that's impeding our teachers' ability to do their jobs and kids' ability to focus. Like, without that page behind this, I think this just doesn't quite tell, we, we need a little bit more-
Okay.
-to make, to, to explain to the community the full extent of the problem because otherwise it looks like our problem isn't actually that bad.
Right, or, or it gets more complex when you talk about Pierce Loft because you, you have to evaluate whether Pierce Loft pedagogically is supporting the function of the school to be in multiple buildings. That's one question and maybe it is. Maybe it's okay to have the older kids in their own loft over there and then, and that that's, that's working. Then the part that's not working is you continue to add more and more kids and classes into the Pierce building and now they have to walk two and a half blocks to get to a gym that's rented from the, the teen center and they have multiple lunches, so they're not eating lunch at, at the right time. And so the, the answer to that is that you have to rebuild something significantly or, or you build a, the ninth elementary school with those five classrooms in it and you can then reduce the number of kids at Pierce. Whether Pierce Loft as a, as a, an eighth grade wing or seventh and eighth grade wing is functioning or not, in order to have the gym and the cafeteria work, you need to build those, that additional school space elsewhere, which needs to somehow be captured in what is our need holistically. What?
Some of that information is on the next slide, but-
Great, thank you.
...the messages received that you would like to see, the secondary slide that, that, you know, shows more ideally meeting, meeting the standards that we want to meet and then exceed as opposed to how are we shoehorning it into work? Is that-
Question. Are modular classrooms included in this and how many of those do we have?
Uh, we do have modular classrooms. We have one at Driscoll. We have two at Baker and some people would call the ones at Lawrence modular, but I really wouldn't. They're pretty much affixed to the-
People don't consider, the, the Driscoll one is bricked over. People don't consider that modular.
It's a, there's a two, there's a two-classroom portable wing that got installed at Baker and that's basically it, two classrooms.
Yeah, there's, there's, yeah, there's construction modularity, but then there's like look, feel integration and, but I don't think anybody would consider either Lawrence or Driscoll modular for the, for the purposes. I mean, they're essentially permanent.
Yeah.
Regardless of how they were constructed, they're essentially permanent.
Okay.
I have a question actually about enrollment in these classes because in the suboptimal classes, I assume the class size is smaller because there's less room. Is-
That's accurate.
If they're suboptimal to begin with, there's not as much space to do things, there's not enough much space, particularly in the lower grades for kids to move around, I guess what I'm wondering is, what, what effect does, do these numbers have when we're looking at our average class size and when we consider what the outcomes are for kids who are in really small classrooms? Now, they may be fine if the groups are small enough. My question also is, are the groups small enough for the space? Do we have any way of thinking this room is X amount of space and therefore we need this much amount of space per child? Has that kind of-
That's part of what this does and that, I believe, is incorporated into classroom assignment. And I'm just going to use lower devotion. The, you know, eight-story building is an example. Most of the classrooms in there are around 675 to 700 square feet, where your traditional classrooms closer to 900 square feet, built for 25 students. With it being, you know, that much less, almost all the classes are in the teens, 17, 18, 19, all the way across, across the board. And, and I know that the high school makes an effort to do that with their smaller rooms and they try to do that in the other schools when, when they can.
So when you're thinking about the New Devotion opening, are you assuming, are you taking, you must be reducing the number of classrooms because you can put more children in all of the classrooms because their space is bigger and yet we're getting a higher number? We go up to 46 and I assume that when we move into the New Devotion, there should be fewer classrooms than you had the year before because you are putting more children in classrooms. I don't know if I'm making-
So I'll answer that, Ms. Scotto. So that's not necessarily how that would work because we have a number of classes that are well over the class size guideline and so you, you have, you know, you have classes at, at, at a number of schools except for lower devotion really and upper devotion. Right now, you have classes in every school that are much bigger than the guidelines that we would want as a district and that the school committee would want. And so you wouldn't see a, a need for fewer classes. There are, there are other areas that are, that are, that are over-enrolled. You also, or that have much higher enrollment than the guideline. You also, you know, we anticipate with a new construction project that we will see new enrollment in the devotion district, which will drive, as every other building project in Brookline has experienced, notably Runkel when it was rebuilt, opened at or slightly above what was anticipated. So we expect that as well.
So it's an even now process?
Yes.
I'm really remembering, maybe in one of the subcommittees or perhaps here at school committee, that we had done an analysis where they went through each classroom at every school and determined the ones that were suboptimal?
Yeah.
And did that take into account rooms that were being utilized for space? So for example, if an auditorium was being used as a music classroom, does that still count the music, the auditorium as a classroom in that or would that say, would that have said, and by the way, we have five classrooms that really aren't intended as classrooms and so it has that information as well?
Music one, I'd have to look at my notes. That's a good question. But auditorium commonly has music used in it, so it's not, music taught in it, so it's not empty all day long in just about every school system I've been in. So that, that may not be the, you know, prime example, but there are, there are spaces that were converted that are being used as classrooms that were never really originally intended to be used for, for that type of performance. I mean, if the auditorium's got a stage and a place for the orchestra and that's where one of the music classes is going to practice, that doesn't, I may have some disagreement with some committee members, that doesn't seem to be as far of a stretch compared to some of the other problems we have in the district. I guess I'd have that one a little further down on the list of, of items to remedy, but.
So I guess if I'm remembering, in that analysis that we did, did we distinguish, was it just based on size? Since we were looking at the size of this classroom, it should have this number of students in it? Or did it look at, is this appropriate classroom space for all the spaces within the schools?
So it's classroom space, but also, also function that was looked at.
Okay. So we have a, so we do have that information in our kind of-
We do. I just, it was a much longer report and I did not put all of that information into a presentation.
I had another question about the dip, the dip that we see for FY 22. And is that, am I remembering correctly that that is, has something to do with how we didn't know about birth rate or is there a reason why there is the dip for anomaly? Because I think this would be also another, if that's still because of the anomaly where we don't know because those children haven't been born.
So I think that's the, I think it's the, I'd have to check, but I think it's the low kindergarten from last year that hits, bubbles through.
So that's because-
You get larger grades ahead. So, so I have to go back to the enrollment report that, so that's actually, that falls, that's a comment in the enrollment report. I have to go back and see what that is.
It's not because the kindergarteners aren't born yet, so we don't know?
I have to go back and see which one it is.
If, if it is because of one of those anomalies, it might help to footnote it just so that it doesn't look like all of a sudden-
Well, the other part about this report is about what the distribute, so one of the footnotes is chart reflects the nonlinear progression of each class. So what this does is, you know, if there are different sections, there are different sized sections of each, at each building and each class, is as that goes through each school, each school building and each section, so we took, you know, this report that you get monthly, you know, this enrollment in terms of the sections, kind of what that, how that all breaks down. So it's, if you've got five sections in one year and the second grade is four sections, those, those all kind of march through and depending on where the, where the enrollment projection comes in behind it, it's either five sections, four sections, three sections, depending on what that is for that building, for that grade level. So that, that's all embedded in this, in terms of what the need is, in terms, in terms of the class size. So there's a whole enrollment piece behind this, which clearly I think is maybe a different presentation than what we're giving tonight, that we need to unpack for you a little bit more in terms of the enrollment, how the enrollment projection sort of fed into this chart.
One last note at the risk of trying the patience of my committee members. I think part of what happened during the whole definition of what is or what is not substandard is that we never, it never came back to the full committee to actually agree on that.
Okay.
So what happened was, was that Mr. Rowe, before Ms. Dunn, did an assessment and inventory. When Ms. Dunn came, a different assessment, inventory was done. And so there were, we had descriptors, but I don't think that it ever kind of came back to the committee to say, here's what we think standard is or isn't, or what we think, or even just to, to your point, what are the tiers of priority? So maybe music in an auditorium is not a priority over walking through one active classroom to get to another classroom, but it's a priority over something else, right?
Sure.
And so I think we never quite got to definitions and, and conditions that we thought were acceptable and unacceptable. So if, if, if it's worth it, it may be worth actually just going back to the principals and teachers in each building and saying, what are the current conditions? Which ones do they consider substandard and why? And then you can kind of bring that back and maybe we can more, for this year? We have it for this year?
We studied that.
Including the, including the classrooms that are being used this year?
We use the MSBA square footage, which is broken out, I mean, it varies by program type for rooms.
And it's, so, so square footage is one piece. I think there are other pieces around use of, access to common space, access to, there are other elements of that.
Storage for something like music, you know?
Right. Okay, so it just may be worth coming back so that we can say, yes, this is what we consider a standard.
That was included.
Great, okay. Great. Okay.
Great. So next, if I could ask, you'll see two or three slides per school. If you could hold the questions till we get, get through each school, we might, we might move this on a little quicker. So at the high school, we have just over 2,000 students. Our peak enrollment is projected to be 2,582. You saw that on the slide, slide before. And, you know, when you're building a building and you have enrollment growth, it's common to have a little bit of cushion so that you don't open it already overfull to begin with. So that's why folks have been saying it's a 2,700-student high school. And it could very well, you know, be more than that, but we'll keep watching that. Know about the study and the short-term need. We need some more tempered air classroom spaces. We have students, one that comes to mind in particular, off the top of my head, that we need to have temperature control in the room so the student can regulate body temperature well. And so that's a, an accommodation that we've met in the past as this student came up through one of our K8 buildings, and I think we'll be having more students with that. So we have some air-conditioned and air-tempered rooms at the high school now, but that'd be a request that you'll see coming up. And in the midterm, we need more classroom space. Cafeterias getting very tight, renovations and upgrades to the TAPN and PE building and the UIB spaces, as well as improving the science labs, bringing those up to current code. So the strategy, we want to continue to meet FAP and reasonable accommodations. There's going to be a...
I'm sorry to interrupt. I know, everybody, bear with me. If you go back to the previous slide, the more cafeteria space, as I recall from HMFH's study, or maybe it was the, the, the previous one, it was, the cafeteria needed to be 75% bigger, but I think the library needed to be 100% bigger, maybe it was the other way around. I think the point is that it's offices. It's, it's, it's every aspect of a school that needs to size up for the capacity that we're building for, and it should just count, rather than, I mean, yeah, cafeteria is a specific problem, but it's everything.
Yes, and I think that the, the space summary that the, that William Ron Architects is working on and a vote that we're going to need to take, whatever, in a month, probably has multiple bullet points under here about conditions that need to get addressed.
So if you can, if you want to spell it out in detail, like cafeteria, then get the long list, or if you don't want to do the long list, just say, "Right-size all facilities to match the capacity that's being built for."
And I think it'd just be helpful to understand if this includes, since, since my understanding is that there's an intent to use Old Lincoln in the midterm, are we saying that even using Old Lincoln, these are still conditions that have to be made? Or is this just a general broad statement, in which case David's question is probably the right one?
For the sake of this exercise, I did not automatically assume that we were going to use Old Lincoln.
Okay.
Because...
So then David's is the right question. Got it?
So the short-term priority at the high school would be adding additional temperature control to the high school, basically for about eight classrooms that have core courses taught in them in, in an area where travel distance between subject matter would be kind of short. That could work. And, you know, for, just some, some points of information as to why we do this, if we had to pay for an out-of-district placement, tuitions could range anywhere from $40,000 to $100,000 for a school year, plus additional transportation costs. You know, the air, the, the life of the system, AC system, for this would be about 15 years. And so just for one student, you know, we'd get a return on the investment as opposed to having somebody that said, "You're not providing me a free and appropriate public education. I need these types of medical accommodations," and now we have to pay for the student to go out. So that's, this is really a kind of a student-generated request that will be coming up to the, to the CIP.
And this did come to school committee two weeks ago. We, we had a discussion about, about this. We didn't get into the detail that it, we spent two hours at Capitol Subcommittee meeting also, three weeks ago, talking about the, Charlie Simmons talked specifically about his strategy, about where in the building to really efficiently and potentially permanently, although we don't quite know in terms of the renovations of the major project, but, you know, to, to do a sort of a vertical stack of classrooms and to get a bunch of climate-controlled classrooms that would then support multiple students in education and everything.
And I think the bottom line is, we would need to be very clear about whether any of that money would be reversed in any way in a renovation project.
As, as best as possible. I mean, I think that they've chosen a part of the building that because of the, the framework of the wood frame part that we don't want to touch so much, that if this is back in that part, it's unlikely, it's sort of, it, yes, we want to be as efficient as possible with public funds.
Question. The acronyms, FAP and ROI?
FAP is Free and Appropriate Public Education, and ROI is Return on Investment. I apologize for not spelling them out. The, the school administrator and me for years, sometimes they, they just slip out and you forget that it's not a real word. Driscoll School, very full building, last renovation about 1980. We've had, Charlie and Ray in the Building Department have done some major work on the roof and envelope. I think everybody else is familiar with it. The way the building was originally built, it appeared to be designed for two sections per grade, and then we expanded in place. This is a building where we had rooms that were 1,400, 1,500 square feet, that we put a wall right down the middle early on when we started running into needing more classrooms. Our kindergarten rooms don't meet the MSBA standards. There's five lunches in this building. If you've been in the Driscoll CAF, you know it's, it's really kind of tight, same with the serving line. We start lunch very early, 10:20, and end right around just after 12:50. And the gym is undersized for the current K8 standard. There are probably other things that, like David said, that need to, need adjustments, but those are some of the ones that really come out. The HVAC system, this has been in the CIP. Charlie has started an initial study of it. And then we don't have a formal parking plan in the neighborhood as an operational endeavor. Just something to bring to your attention, we're looking to, for the moratorium to be lifted by the Transportation Board in the future as we need to update some of our parking plans or get them formalized as we've grown over the years. There should be a total, TDM study, Total Demand Management. I believe that's what that stands for.
Transportation.
Transportation Demand Management that will be coming out that will have some recommendations.
And just a, a note on that, I, I, sooner rather than later, I'd actually like to dock it, the, the TDM's way through Capitol Subcommittee and School Committee. It's, can be going to a lot of different boards. The, you know, it's being executed by Transportation. The Board of Selectmen are sort of driving it, but it, it's a critical path for us in, in so many different buildings that we, you know, I, I think we want to hear about it as soon as it's, and it's published in draft form, like to see it and provide any kind of support we can to that townwide effort.
So with the HVAC being the priority at the Driscoll School, we need to keep the heating, ventilation, and what little air conditioning equipment there is over there in reliable, functional condition. What it really bluntly, we want to make sure we can keep the building open because Charlie's been having a hard time getting parts. Some of the parts date back to 1913, 1950. They don't make them anymore, and he's been doing his best with the people he has to keep the building running. But, you know, that change really does need to be made. So the action, I guess, for the school committee would be to vote to support the HVAC project that's in the CIP if you were to take any type of action.
Last year, you did the design funds for this project, so this year, the $4 million for the actual construction is in the CIP.
And then this would improve the climate control of the building, and like I already said, the information, you know, why are we doing it? Because they just can't get the parts to, to keep the system running anymore. It's a, it's an old steam system, and that would be a forced hot water system is what they're looking at, which is how we heat most of the other building. Next school is Runcle, and, you know, last renovated, 2014. It's also very full, class sizes of 20 to 26, which is, you know, above our target of, of 21, but because the rooms are both newer and built, you know, sized for, under the state standards, you can fit some more kids in, and it's generally not a problem to do so. It's designed and used as a three-section school, and Runcle, unlike most of the other schools, has about two-thirds of its rooms with tempered air, and so we run our extended school year program there each summer. And so that building is really running almost at full capacity the majority of the year. You know, going, going forward, I'd love to be able to, to give that building a rest, a summer off. And there's limited field, field space and street parking only at Runcle. Runcle does have an approved transportation parking plan. So again, we'd like to keep, continue to meet Free and Appropriate Public Education and reasonable accommodations to students, i.e. have the building at a reasonable temperature the way everyone expects it at home and everywhere else, provide some operational relief to Runcle. If we have the HVAC project go forward at Driscoll, we could potentially run the summer school program, extended school year program at Driscoll, giving Runcle a rest. We could get a better deep cleaning in the building, and the neighbors might, might like the summer off with the parking in the neighborhood. So that's just the reasons why what happens at Driscoll could also help the Runcle School. New devotion, this is, it's still scheduled to open in August of 2018. It's a five-section school, plus the two K rooms and 1,050 students. Right now, we've got just over 800 students in the buildings that are part of the devotion. Everything's built to standards, and it's going to have a tempered, dehumidified air system throughout the building. So it's going to be taking in fresh air, and it's going to take the humidity out and, and put that into the building. Right now, in all of our schools, when we're taking in the outside air, it's either heated or it's, it's not, it's not tempered. So when you're taking, when it's 88 and humid outside and we have to take in fresh air to some extent per, per the code, we're bringing in warm air. And that's where everybody wants to open their windows. As it runs through the system, the building holds the heat, and it winds up being even warmer than what it, what it is outside. So devotion, taking the humidity out will make it much more comfortable for everybody inside the building. This is very exciting. I've been, I've been in, I've seen it. I think folks are really going to like the design, the classrooms with a lot of natural light coming in as well. It's going to be a very nice, desirable environment to work in, teach in, go to school in. Definitely exciting. So how does this impact the school committee? Well, we saw that there's going to be two additional classrooms, and we want to make sure that we try to balance equitable class size as much as we can between all the buildings. So you should be looking for the new enrollment report that I'm sure folks probably wish we had today. It'll be coming out in December, January, and we're doing some early budgeting for the new devotion building and its enrollment for staffing, as well as planning the parking, both in the garage and in the neighborhood. So devotion, and then we go right into Pierce. As you know, they're, they're neighbors, they, but Pierce was really constructed in 1971. It hasn't really had a full renovation. There has been a new boiler. They've done roofwork. There's been some major repairs done to the building, but hasn't really had a renovation. And it's, it's really a campus. We're in four different buildings. We're in the main building. We're at 62 Harvard. We're at Pierce Historical, and our eighth graders go, go down the street to the teen center for, for gym and PE. The class sizes range from 18 to 23. Kindergarten rooms don't really meet the current MSBA standards. We do have four lunches in there. That's better than some of the other schools. And the gym is a little bit undersized for a K8 classroom, and it just doesn't work with, right now, with, with 43 sections. It's not going to work with, with 45 sections. It just doesn't work well as a K8 school. So in the short term, we're looking for some Americans with Disability Act improvements to the nurse's office and the restroom. Provide a little enrollment relief and adequate space for the PE and the cafeteria. And eventually, we're going to need some flooring replacement in the next few years. You know, the carpet in there hasn't been replaced. Charlie tells me he thinks maybe 20 years. So we, we need to make some, some upgrades there. There's a natural turf field and playground across the street. I think many folks have seen it. It's just renovated. It's very nice. And there is parking in the garage, as well as a T-board approved parking plan in, in the neighborhood. So the priority at Pierce would be to renovate the nurse's office, which would affect the principal's office and the bathroom that's in there, to make that ADA accessible, and also try to maintain the enrollment to meet the facility capacity so that we don't have to continue to lease space if we can help it. So again, asking the school committee to vote to support the CIP to make the nurse's office restroom ADA accessible. Still working on finalizing this, this cost with Charlie and getting it into the CIP. But Director of Nursing, Patricia Laham is here tonight if folks have more elaborate questions about the nurse's office. And then we've already gone over the, the enrollment sheets there, but we're leasing 62 Harvard and the teen center to meet our needs this year. Lawrence School, last renovated in 2004, plus, plus the modulators that were also recently done. You know, to me, based on the layout of the building and, and things, it was originally designed for three sections per grade, and we expanded in place to four sections per grade. Right now, everything except for grade seven. Class sizes range from 18 to 23. And in this building in particular, there's, there's six classrooms that, you know, I noted were undersized by MSBA standards. I don't think they were necessarily built or renovated to the MSBA standards. And sometimes when you're renovating an old building, you don't always have the choice if you're just going to have a smaller classroom, but six can be a lot. They run lunch a little differently there. Lunch, the kids keep coming in and keep coming out, so they're not set periods in order to make it work. In the short term, they would like to continue to remove the wallpaper and paint over it. And some of the areas, as the wallpaper from 2004 is starting to peel, and when, that's been one of the things we've been working on with, with the Town Facilities Department over the last couple of years. And the PTO has been pretty adamant about asking for some air conditioning for the third floor or, you know, climate control. It started out with a request for the auditorium, then the third floor, and then at least one person said, "It should be the whole building. Equity shouldn't matter." So it's, it's a request that I get from time to time, especially when it's a hot day. I don't think it's a surprise to anyone. The buildings are built to hold the heat. We're in New England. We know heating's generally the issue. Heat rises, and when we're taking in the fresh air, plus the sunlight and the body heat, it can get warm in the buildings. And of late, with the 99-degree day we had last June, of course, I got plenty of calls and complaints and other things. So I just want to bring it to your attention that, that people are asking and how you want to proceed with that. It's probably a longer discussion for another day. It's got a natural turf playground. Parks has addressed the drainage issue. I think that's improved, and parking is also via our Transportation Board plan because there is no parking on-site. Like Runcle, there's, there's no staff parking. We're parking lot on-site. It's all, it's all in the neighborhood. So we want to continue to maintain the new building and, you know, how do we improve climate control there? That's why I have a question mark. Vote to support to improve, improve climate control and then maintain an environment that's conducive to learning. I have checked the temperatures on, on hot days, and sometimes it is 7, 8 degrees warmer in the room than it is outside. So if it's 80 outside and it's 88 in the room and it's humid, I understand their point. We'll kind of leave it at that. And then I did get a price from the engineer that, that did the renovation work there, that's also working on devotion, Garcia, Kaleska, and D'Souza, also known as GGD, so you don't have to say their names over and over again. They seem to, and they're also doing the Driscoll project. They seem to do very good work in town. The Building Department and the project managers seem to like them a lot, and that's a pretty high compliment. And from, you know, what little work I've had with them, they, they seem to be very good problem solvers and do a good job. New Lincoln School, again... New Lincoln School, again, it's also pretty much a full building. Class size ranges from 17 to 24. It appears to have been originally designed for two sections per grade and then expanded into place, into three sections per grade. We run five lunches. The gym is undersized. The multipurpose room, which they use for gym overflow, isn't really an adequate gym space. There are other things that could probably use some improvements there as well, but we kept the list kind of short. The flooring and the carpet, in the next few years, we're going to need to make some replacements to that. It's, a lot of it's original. We've started replacing some throughout the building the last couple of years. There's a request for a formal parking plan in the neighborhood. We've gotten a lot of neighborhood complaints recently. We've had some meetings with the neighbors to hear their concerns, understand where they're coming from. And then I was in there today as well as last year, third floor and parts of the second floor. Ironically, today, parts of the second floor were warmer than the third floor. Third floor does have ceiling fans. Second floor does, does not in the classrooms. So that's been an ongoing issue. So to move this along, I won't go through all the things again because you can, you can read them. At the Baker School, last renovation, turn of the century. Building's pretty full as well. It appears to have been originally designed for three sections per grade and then expanded in place to four sections per grade. And then, you know, moved out to five sections per grade for three grades right now. 22 of the 40 rooms are below the current MSBA standard. And that effectively really limits the class size. So we try to keep the classes smaller. But where you live in town, sometimes Baker, you know, is projected to get some growth with building developments that are around there in the future. The art and music spaces at Baker are definitely inadequate compared to the other buildings or to the current standards. There's four lunches at that school. They've done, Charlie has done a very good job of modifying the space to squeeze in as many students as possible as, as they expanded in place with that cafeteria. And that's really worked out as well as could be expected. Gym's also undersized, like they are in all the schools, for having two classes at once, especially when you've got the older kids. They're just bigger legs and they need more space to run around. And the principal and the two vice principals, they, they share, they all share one office. They've given up their space so that other staff members could have, could have space. They need some flooring and carpet replacement. There's been some requests for climate control on the third floor there. They're definitely going to need some enrollment relief down the road. I think that also can tie into the ninth school discussion. Parking is on-site in the neighborhood. There's a playground and a natural turf field. It's in, you know, fair shape right now, but going midterm down, down the road, there could also need to be some improvements there. We'll move that along. The Heath School, last renovation, 2012. Also, you know, appears to have been originally designed for two sections per grade and then we expanded it into a three-section school. Class sizes range, you know, anywhere from 15 to 24, but I think the 15's kind of more of a fluke. I think that'll probably change and go back up to 16 or 17 rather quickly. K rooms are undersized, still four lunches there. They have requests for AC and climate for parts of the second floor that get a lot of direct sunlight, especially the rooms that were made with additional sound absorption. Money was spent to create an environment that reduced the sound for students that were sensitive to those needs. The unfortunate byproduct is it held more, more heat. And so instead of, I've been talking with Charlie about that in the future, but instead of doing away with those improvements made to the room, those investments, you know, tempering that space with some air conditioning so that we, we still have the space in districts that handles, can accommodate those needs. BEEP. BEEP could probably be its own presentation, but the Lynch Center, last studied in 2012 and was last, had its last major renovation or repair was in 1978. It does need some new flooring and a facelift, especially on the first floor with wallpaper and things of that nature. Longer term, as our school population has grown, our BEEP population and number of classes and offerings has not. I know that that's a topic that has been discussed and should probably continue to come up again in the future. So just some of the flooring on the first floor, basement slash ground level there. It's really at the end of its useful life and we, we probably need to do something about that. And last but not least, what we call classroom capacity and where we rent space. We rent space for BEEP at Temple E. Math, at Temple O. Bay Shalom, 62 Harvard for Pierce, the teen center for Pierce, Webster Place for the office staff. I know that's not classroom capacity directly, but indirectly, a lot of folks came from the fifth floor and the schools where they were pushed out of their offices as they were making more classroom space. Right now, I have 47 people at 24 Webster Place. Some are there full-time and some are there just to have a home base as they travel around the, the other schools. And, and we make it work. And then at Baker School, two modular classrooms, which we're almost done paying for. With that, I guess we could open it up to other questions.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Scottow.
I'm, I'm curious to hear about the improvements to the nurse's office. Pierce has students in the Harvard Street renovated, the Harvard Street rentals, as well as in the main building. Are, is the, is there one nurse for everybody?
We currently have 1.6 FTEs, so there's one full-time nurse and somebody that's there part-time during the day.
What happens if someone at the teen center gets hurt during gym?
Generally speaking, the students would come to the clinic. The nurse does go to where the injury is or illness is if needed.
And what, can you talk a little bit about the renovation of the nurse's room?
Well, the nurse's room, there are 863 or four kids at Pierce School. It is busy every single day. I think last year, they saw an average of about 500 students every month. There are three COTS, which are usually busy, they're usually full. There are often times that students will come, there's very little privacy. You can have maybe a curtain to separate you from another student, but there's not real privacy. There's not privacy to have a conversation with a parent, a physician, a staff member if there's something, you're trying to get some more information, trying to do an assessment.
Is, is this significantly different than it is at other schools? I'm not asking that to say it's okay. I'm asking that to say, is Pierce the only place that needs nurses?
It's not the only place, it's the most significant. Driscoll isn't terribly far behind in terms of a very small bathroom. Pierce bathroom is not really handicapped accessible, so a student in a wheelchair or with some significant needs, if the nurse has to help the student get into the bathroom, there's not really room to help. There's not room to move a wheelchair in and have somebody have independent care in that bathroom. The layout of the clinic is difficult in an emergency. If an ambulance has to come in and you're trying to care for a student in an emergency situation, trying to provide privacy and efficiency and quality care. It's, I would say it's as challenging as any other clinics, the most challenging.
So in this contemplated project, which is the first we've heard about, what sounds like an important project that you're trying to get into the current CIP plan, what, what improvements are, are you hoping to make?
Well, we're hoping to make the bathroom ADA accessible. We've talked about a lot of different things. I think that the current thing is the principal, this principal and previous principals have offered to give up office space to make the clinic area accessible for all students to allow for some privacy and confidentiality. So I think the plan that we're looking at is ADA accessible bathroom and expanding some of the clinic space into the principal's office.
Right. So it sort of doubles up with the, thematically with a lot of tonight's conversation is we can fix something, but we're doing it by, you know, like at Baker, having two vice principals and a principal all in the same office or whatever. So that, that whole, you know, suboptimal conditions that we would like to relieve, but ultimately, we need to relieve by, by, by building another elementary school. Oh, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Gillis?
What's happening with this document? I mean, given all the questions that we've had on it, it feels to me like there were, at least I heard, five or six things that if we, I mean, I think there's some, my assumption is that at some point, it, there's a broader conversation with the advisory committee, with the Board of Sluckman, and there's sort of other people who are going to have, ask for this at some point. And given the amount of feedback here, I'm just wondering if it's worth making the edits and then posting it or communicating it in some way, simply because this is a set of questions that we get a lot.
Well, the first thing I was going to do was put a follow-up to this slide that explained, you know, the need to the standards, not just how we're making it work, because they are definitely two different things.
I mean, I think the highest level question that I'm impressed with is that again and again and again, in the detail of the, of the, the initial statement about the schools is that it, that in 1994, we opened the new Lincoln School, which we designed to serve a, a population that's increased by 50%. But we designed it for a certain, I mean, if, if, in fact, we designed it as a two-section per grade school and now we're operating it as a three-section per grade school. And we're, as, as, as Mr. Gillis said, early on, we're coping, we're, you know, we're managing, we're managing class size, whatever, but it doesn't, that doesn't come without a cost. And how do we capture that? We're not necessarily, nobody's talking about moving from a three-section school at Lincoln back to a two-section school right now because we're, you know, we're just trying to get at the, you know, the problem without that drastic a return to where we were 23 years ago or, you know, 11, 12, 13 years ago, 2006, when the growth started. But, but what do we, it, right now, it's sort of a little vague and anecdotal where it basically just says, well, this was a two-section school, now it's a three, this was a three, now it's a four, this was a three, now it's a four. But we're, again and again and again, we see that. And there's, there's the, it implies a specific need that we want to be able to quantify in our conversations with, with advisory and with the public, with town meeting, with everybody who's concerned about the, the, both the, the schools and the delivery of education and, and doing the best we can here and the fiscal health of the, of the community also, balancing both of those concerns.
I'm not sure if the document came to the school committee, but Joe and I did have a, I think it was four or five pages of list, and they're enumerated with all the deficiencies in each building. So it would, it would number the number of classrooms, like I pointed out at Baker and at Lawrence, for example, that were substandard. At Runkel, you know, we didn't have that problem because it was just recently, recently built. So could we point that out in greater detail at some of the other schools? Yes, it's, it's on that list. I just didn't always necessarily put it in the slide because there's only so much information you can, you can fit on a slide. I think, you know, the other thing that, that, I'm not sure it was asked, but it probably needs to be stated, is that, you know, even if we're just focusing on the classroom sections, if, if we don't have more classroom sections and we, we can't expand in place, class size goes up. And we're already full now with the standard of 21. And in some cases, we're 23, 24. Or in the smaller rooms where we make a deliberate effort to keep it under 20, we do. But if we have a few hundred more students sprinkled about, it, it gets tighter and tighter. So the, I still think there's very much so a need for the ninth, the ninth school.
Right, absolutely. It's just how do we, how do we quantify that in, in, in a document? And is this the document that we want to share with, with advisory and, you know, is this the framework that we want to get that information into? Or is there a different document, a different framework? Because we need the, we need the document. I mean, we, we, and, and again, I mean, I've already said this a couple of times tonight, but letting class size enlarge because we don't do, we don't build a ninth school, it doesn't, it's not the only part of that conversation. We can talk about the, the negative impacts on educational outcomes of, you know, or you could say, no, no, you can put a second teacher in that classroom and you can mitigate that issue, you can do it that way. But, I mean, are you going to start feeding kids lunch at 8:20? Right? It's not, ultimately, you need all these other spaces. You need to, you need more school space, you need guidance, you need all of the spaces so that we can't just talk about either putting more kids into a classroom or adding another classroom because it doesn't solve the problem.
So one of the things that we didn't do, but I think it sounds like we maybe should do in terms of a data point, is if we only measured our capacity by a certain grouping of spaces, be it a cafeteria space and classroom sections, what actually would be the capacity of that building and what's that delta? And, you know, I think some of it is what measures do you want us to look at the buildings in terms of what is the, you know, with the original capacity of the building as it was built and then we've added and, but at some point, that cafeteria space, is that the space that drives, you have three lunches and this is how many students actually fit in that space for lunches means three times X is the capacity of that building, regardless of how many classrooms you've built. Because to have three lunches, that's how you need to get kids through three lunches. So I, I think there's, I think there's a methodology or an argument that certainly, we have the data now and the information now to actually be able to, to do that. We gave to the Capitol Subcommittee the detail of the report, of, of all, of what we found. We did not share that with the full committee, we certainly can, but, because it's pretty dense details. In terms of how, how, how far do you want to get into the detail and what do you want us to produce? We can, we can sort of put a couple scenarios together. I think it would be helpful to have a chart of every single building. Here's what it was originally built with in terms of sections. And then here's sort of add-ons. I can't do it year by year, but here's the net add and here's the total number of sections. And based on where we have this growth here, in this slide is sort of where the delta is by, by school. So you can actually see where those 54 classrooms went that we've talked about.
And then also understanding what's changed in the building and its ability to deliver educational, education. So we, I mean, for instance, we, we keep turning the computer classrooms into, into regular education classrooms. And maybe, maybe that's okay because that's not our model, we have carts, there's whatever. But if we take programmatic space after programmatic space after programmatic space and we don't use them anymore for, for, for those kind of support purposes, what is the, what is this, is this having, what's the impact on our ability to deliver the educational outcomes that we're trying to? I mean, it all comes back to what is our, you know, what are, what are we trying to accomplish in terms of education? And is it, is it happening? Is it, is, is it facile to do what we need to do? Or are we impinged upon and unable because? So if the pinch point in one building is that the, is the, is the lunchroom, then we need to understand that we either have to reduce enrollment in that building or we need to talk to Charlie Simmons and, and Tony Wigley and Matt, need to come up with what would it take and hire an architect and look at is their land to push out the, to double the size of the lunchroom or is that not, you know, we, we need to know what these solutions are and what the costs are. Because people keep coming back to like, well, maybe you could just continue to do expand in place or whatever. But anecdotally, what we've always said is that's more expensive than building a ninth school to go, turning around all of these buildings. Yes?
So it seems to me that there are kind of a couple thoughts. I mean, just one, and just maybe a couple themes, and people might have other themes. But I would say the, just sort of going sequentially through the deck, it seems that the first set of questions around is the school committee's definition of a standard acceptable classroom. And so I think that the data you have in terms of what the current conditions are is really important. And maybe you can almost recommend back to us.
important. And maybe you can almost recommend back to us, or we can, you know, do it iteratively in capital, sort of get to tiers, or whatever it is, to say, here's what we think an acceptable standard classroom is, and here's what we actually think, we, we, we don't want to be counting, this is not a good way for kids to learn, and it's not a good way for teachers to teach, and, and we need to build for it. And so that then just updates this, so that we have this list of substandard classrooms by room, we have an agreed definition of what we think standard is, and then that number of 18, 17, or 18 pops out different. My guess is it's upwards of 25, but probably maybe around 25. I don't know. Then there's sort of, hmm?
It'd be more than 25.
I was going to say, upwards of 25 was, was my guess. But at any rate, then there's sort of a second question, which is, how do we think, what, what is sort of our, our extra classroom needs, our outside of classroom needs? And that's the common spaces. So maybe, you know, Mary Ann, if you had a chart that said, like, here is our capacity, here's our number of classrooms, but then here is some of those other common spaces, like how many, you know, cafeteria capacity and number of lunches. Or, I mean, outdoor space per kid is always a big one in this town. Everybody wants to know, like comparatively, square feet outdoors per child is the one that we keep getting. And I think some, at some point, you'd calculated that.
We did that.
Yeah. Yeah. And so just maybe pulling all that together into saying, like, here's the classroom question, but then here are those other spaces, and you can make it just color-code them. You know, this is, this one's red, this one's out of line, this one's green, you know, it's just very simply, you can kind of look at a lot of information with color and understand, to your point, how many, and then, anyway. There's also a, a version of it, which is the class size question, which is the one that we get a lot. As school committee members, you, I'm sure the superintendent gets it also, but just in terms of like the histogram of class sizes, and specific, like meaning how many 16s, 17s, 18s. Because we've got, by my count, 14 that are over our class size guidelines, and a whole bunch that are on the bubble of 24s and 25s. That has pushed our distribution really far to the right from four, five years ago. And so the average, I'm actually not sure what would happen to the average, because you've got so many, like 7, 16, 17s in here. I'm not sure where our average is, but the, but it's, it feels, just looking at it, if we were to have done this three years ago or today, it feels like there's more barbell and less cluster. It was, it was pretty tightly clustered around 20 to 22, maybe three years ago. And now it feels like there are more 24s, 25s, 26s even, and then more 17s.
So lower devotion is going to throw that, because they're smaller classrooms. So those were intentionally kept under 20, so just...
So that might be just worth, you know, taking out, because we don't expect that condition to continue even. You know, that that's an outlier, and it's just say, this excludes devotion because of, you know, intentional whatever there. And then, and then it just seems, I'm going to finish this thought, and then I'll, I'll shut up. But then it feels to me like if you had some different, like if we had a really clear sense of like, this is how many classrooms we need, and then we have a really clear sense of like what's happening in our buildings in some color-coded way, then you could kind of get to some specific questions, like, okay, what is our approach to air conditioning? Every single building will tell you, it's too hot, that does not air conditioning. So how are we thinking about that? Where are we doing it? If it's only as needed, then we understand that some PTOs are going to advocate and others aren't, but just as an equity issue, what is our approach? And then we can let people know, this is our approach to ACs and how they come back. Or what is our approach to, Barbara, your question about nursing, like what, you know, what are, what are the set of conditions, and how do we prioritize those? I think just kind of pops up. And then, on the high schools specifically, I just think that for this, for this deck, if we put it out, it's probably best to just refer to the William Ron, you know, process, instead of trying to guess at the, the high-level needs, because it's, to David's point, it's so complicated. But then being able to say, even within that, like, yes, air conditioning is important for certain kids, how are we going to advocate for this in a way, for those kids who need it, in a way that we're not asking the voters for $350,000, that four years later, like, you haven't even hit the payback period, and you're already ripping up those building, those rooms. So I understand that that's what, what Charlie was thinking through, but that hasn't really come through here. So anyway, I just think that there's some tightening we can do, and making our case a little bit clearer. I'll shut up now.
I have a question with respect to the class size, and something that you said earlier in your presentation, what made me think about this. For some of the class sizes, I think they're very low, they're very low. And so when you look at it, you get the impression that they're low, because, I mean, even if we had some that are as low as 15 in a class, that I had always thought, well, that, that must be that that grade doesn't need as many kids in the class, or, you know, maybe there's a dip down or something. But I, when you were talking, I realized that it, actually, some of the classes might be smaller because the classrooms that they're in limit the number of students that can fit in them.
That can fit well, yes.
That can fit well. And so I don't know, and it might be, it might not be enough of an anomaly to make any difference, but that might also be something that's worth noting.
That would be one of the first things that, that I would know. You know, like with Baker, we noted that there were 22 of the 40 classrooms are below the current standard, below 850 square feet. So are they, you know, 770 square feet? Are they, some are smaller, some are a little more. But because of that, we don't try to fit 26 kids in a room if we can help it, because it's not going to work. Like, the teacher's going to, you know, the teacher, the principal, like, they know the space they have. And we try to be as respectful and as manageable for all the kids that are going to be in there to have, you know, a good education. You know, I think the main point still is that we've made as many internal moves as we can, and that we still need to move forward with, with the ninth school, as well as using the buffer zones with, with devotion to equitably balance our, our class sizes. And, and class size for every classroom, knowing that class, classrooms in, in, in the system could be as much as 80 years old, are not always going to be the exact same size to the new standard from what was the old standard. So we try to right-size the, the classroom with the right number of pupils.
I, I want to follow up a little bit on what Susan said about spaces other than classroom spaces, but more of the common spaces. We've talked a lot about the cafeterias and needing to be able to seat kids so that we can move up, so that they don't have to start having lunches at 10:15 or whatever. But there's also the issue of the serving lines, and the space you actually need to produce the meals and get the kids through there quickly. What's happening in a lot of cafeterias are the lines are backing up so long, because the serving lines were designed for a two-section school. I mean, I, I am intimately familiar, for example, with the Driscoll Cafeteria. You are trying to get kids through a serving line that is no longer efficient for doing that. So when you think about that, you have to also think about more space, because those things take more space. I'm also thinking about art rooms. Because again, I know at Driscoll, what was originally a double art room was first cut in half, and made one classroom, half an art room, and now the art room has been moved someplace else. Well, if you want art teachers to be creative, if you want them to do innovative things with the kids, you have to have enough room for that to happen. I also think about libraries. People are wild about the Learning Commons idea with kids coming and sitting. I'm more interested in how much space is there for the librarian to work with kids, how much space is there for people to go there and sit and study and have the resources they need, how much space is there for the collections? We circulate huge amounts of books in the Brooklyn Public Schools. Driscoll was somewhere around 30,000 books being circulated last year. With that, again, when you've got a class lined up taking their books out, you've got to make sure you have space for them. And you, every special space you think about in a school, we really need to look at what's being done there, what is working and what isn't working, what is efficient? Because it's fine if something is beautiful and new and so forth, forth. But if you can't move kids through at an appropriate speed, or there's no place for them to sit, or whatever you want to say along those lines, it won't, it won't be helpful in the long run. So I think looking at the, looking at what we're calling the common spaces, and seeing whether there are things that could be sized differently, maybe made bigger, maybe some of the spaces need less, and just really try to look at what they're doing today in those spaces, and see. I mean, the nurses' office was a particularly fine example of that, because all kinds of things go on in the nurses' office, from kids who are having, who've had an accident, to kids who've come in and they're crying, and they just need their hands. I mean, there are a million different things that go on, and you need space to do that. So I think that's something we, we really need to do.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And to be continued.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a beginning and end story. It will definitely be ongoing.
All right. Our next two items are going to be first readings of the school budget development calendar, and the guidelines and priorities, and we will be led by Ms. Schreiner Oldham.
So the finance subcommittee met last week, or the, last week or before, and reviewed the budget development calendar. Do we have, everybody has copies of it. Do I highlight specific things on it, or do, if anyone has questions about why the format is as it is? And upcoming, by the end of the month, all of the budget managers are meeting with, having budget meetings with the budget managers and curriculum coordinators and principals. And that's the next thing that's happening before our next school committee meeting. And then also, there was a lot of attention that was paid to thinking about the override, the upcoming overrides, and what the timeline is needed for that, in order to have the information that will be necessary by the override study committee. And so making sure to try to incorporate some of the deadlines, and just the priorities of what's being worked on when, so that, that lines up to meet the needs of the override as well. And then...
So, I don't know, Ms. Dunn, is there, do you want to highlight anything in the budget development calendar that you see as being worthy of us really having a deeper understanding of, or any particular in, in relation to this, the added...
In relation to the added complexities of both serving an external committee of the override study committee, and the, its, its needs and its calendar, and then also potentially the budget development requirements of needing to prepare both a override successful and an override unsuccessful budget.
So, this schedule sort of accommodates some of that. I think the, I'm in discussion with senior staff about sort of the override, non-override budget, and sort of how are we going to approach that. The October meetings will be very helpful for us in terms of knowing sort of where the pressure points are for the operating budget, so that in November, before the superintendent kind of gets, November is when we sort of take all that number crunching. And Melissa and I have some reconciliations we do back and forth before she makes her presentation in terms of the funding that's available, or the revenue projection that's available. She does that in December. Then the superintendent will have the month of December to look at all the sort of competing priorities, and we'll be probably having budget discussions with budget managers about that, once we know what that number is, and we know what our gap is. And then can make some, so there'll be probably a preliminary budget in terms, in December, which will show the gap. And if we've identified some areas where, like, what, where, where we would be looking at efficiencies, or what have we seen, and then I'm sure there'll be other iterations as we sort of unpack the revenue stream. So December is our goal to have a budget document, so that the first school committee meeting in January, we begin to have those discussions about the revenue gap that we're anticipating, we'll know exactly what that is. I am going to share with the committee is that I've been able to close a $2 million gap for the last two fiscal years. I am not going to be able to close a $2 million gap again this year, so I'm expecting a $2 million gap right out of the gate, because all of the places that I could go to sort of figure out where those, what was generating that and where those go, have essentially been mined. So that is, so I do anticipate that. And so that's part of the discussions with the budget managers, in terms of efficiencies, pressure points, things like that. So there's some, there are going to be some different types of discussions this time around. And as you recall, I've been, I've brought the budget managers into this budgeting process, where they have not necessarily been part of the process, they are now very much part of the process. So this, for some of them, this will be the third round of doing budget. And so every year, they ask more informed questions, better questions, they have different demands, different expectations, which are all positive, in terms of resources and information they get from the finance office. So that's all very positive. So I'm very, and I've sort of already stated that I'm, my interest, while we're in an override situation, is that we, there's a way to planfully, there's a way to be planful about an override process, and not to be alarmist, and we can be planful about our needs, rather than, I'll just leave it at that. We, we can be more planful about, and are more proactive about our needs and how we need to address them going forward, with an override or without an override. So that's, I've tried to stay with the schedule for the override study committee. They're going to want to know that number, we'll know that number in the middle of January, sorry, the middle of December, because that's a number that Melissa needs as part of her revenue projection and her, her forecasting. So there'll be a preliminary number as part of that.
So that, that was very helpful. We're, this is our first reading of the budget development calendar. Does anybody have any questions? Yes?
And I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting. You can just update me on, what is the expectation of our subcommittee for budget projections, like multi-year budget projections versus a one-year budget? So for example, you might do different, you know, if we need to, if we need to vote on a budget that does not include, you know, includes $2 million of cuts, or whatever it is, if we're assuming that, are we, are we going to try to do a budget projection that has multiple years of budget cuts? Are we going to, because you might do things differently if you knew that you had multiple years of budget cuts.
So the first budget projection and the one that will, will be one is, if we had our base level, so no, basically level fund plus contract increases and, you know, status quo. We're continuing what we have in future years, just as I've done in, in the last budget, is a five-year forecast based on what we have today, and that will continue to next year. Once, that's in order to give us sort of what that gap is. I think what you're also, what you're talking about is sort of what happens, is a scenario based in terms of what is the override number going to be? And so how would we, what would we do with that, and how would we plan around that, that override number, or that? So I have to wait and find out sort of what the reaction, I, I don't know what the number is. So I have to, I need to know more information before I can get into the scenarios you're talking about. But I can imagine those scenarios would be requested and asked, and then there's a, you know, administrative team that needs to be put together in, in terms of prioritizing what that looks like, so I can map it out.
I just wouldn't underestimate the amount of work that that's going to take from a staff perspective, and also just needing input from the finance subcommittee on some judgments and guidelines.
Yep.
And the superintendent ultimately recommends it, but some of the priorities and choices are, he's going to need, it's going to need to be a discussion. I mean, you'll come with a recommendation, but we're all going to have to...
There are lots of discussions.
Because I guess the other piece that I was trying to figure out is, to what extent are the budget projections going to be all-in to get us through opening our new buildings? Like, are we going to assume that a five-year budget projection opens a new high school, or opens a new ninth school? Because it's my understanding that those piece, like those are other pieces of analysis. I mean, again, maybe, I'm sorry, I didn't go to the last meeting, but maybe I missed them. But at some point, we need to sort of think about those. And five years out, presumably, there are curricular improvements, there are kind of other things that we might need to be doing over a five-year period, or whatever it ends up looking like. So I'm just trying to understand, like, how, how all-in will we be able to be?
So there'll be, so there'll be our, what we have today, projected five years, based on what, and that includes the opening of devotion. Okay, so that will include the opening of devotion, will, will be included in sort of the base level five-year projection. And an addendum to that will be an add-on for what, if, for the high school, and what year the high school, or what progression we would have. the high school or what progression we would have. So, part of the base is going to include, is going to incorporate the enrollment projection. So, enrollment projections, whether we add a building or not, are going to be included to some extent in, in the projection. What isn't included, I will have as an addendum, in terms of what years that building impact will hit in those years, so that you can pull out, here's the impact of the high school, here's the impact of the ninth school, and it can get added in as people want to add it in, but we don't lose the base level, because it may be part of a discussion or decision in terms of the override vote is to a timing of a, another override in the future, as the building opens, or as the timing of the dollar amount and when revenue or money is made available, during, in what years that's made available, and so there are lots of, so I will have those separated out. And that may not be in the budget document, it may be a separate document that is in it, I'm not quite sure, I don't, not quite sure where it fits, but it will be done.
And I just, I just think it's really important, as we do this, to understand that a one-year budget and a five-year budget projection are two really, really different things, because a five-year budget projection is going to make some assumptions, like, is there a freestanding cafeteria at 111 Cypress that you have to staff at $200,000 or not, right? Versus, are they going to wheel it down the street? And there's no way to get into that level of, unless you're planning to, for the most part.
No, good news is that that's not an operating budget expense, so we won't be...
Cafeteria services?
Cafeteria services is, no, we run a revolving fund for our cafeteria services, so you're based on meal counts.
Wherever it shows up. It's going to show up somewhere.
But I'm not going, I'm not going to be doing projections on revolving funds. But I get your point, yes.
Transportation, busing, there are all kinds of toggles. You can pick any number of them. And I guess my point is, I think the, the committee needs to get comfortable, understanding that you make projections on a certain set of assumptions, and you just be really clear about what those assumptions are. I mean, you're obviously comfortable with this, but I think the public has to get comfortable, and that, the assumptions may change, but that's based on a set of assumptions, and that's different from a one-year budget, where you actually have to vote a number and bodies are assigned to it, and it's actually a thing. So, that's a huge point of confusion.
Any other questions? Very well, let's move on to the budget guidelines.
So, the budget guidelines are, on the whole, consistent with what they've been in prior years. They do kind of take a distinction or make sure to address how we're wanting to have continuous improvement, and then also because we have this big impact on the schools and the budget, based on our enrollment growth, and so there's kind of separating out and making sure that we're addressing both of those issues, and recognizing that we do have the priorities for the school and the schools and what we're hoping to accomplish, and separate what we're, what our needs are based on the growth and the continued growth in the future. There's also a change, we have the new financial assistant policy, and so as part of that, there's additional funding that will be required to implement it, so that's addressed in this document as well. We have numerous capital projects that are coming up, and so there will be additional operating expenses that are associated with those for BEEP, devotion, the ninth school, and the high school, and so those are also included in here. And then you'll see at the bottom of page two, the mention of state mandates, and those state mandates are not ones that have changed, but they are ones that have budget implications. And so, those have been highlighted, and this is one.
Do we need to budget anything for TDM? Is that in here? Sorry if I missed it. Or is that on the town side?
I would hope that it would be on the town side. And, yes, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
So, I think that the public should know that this document is one that we've been working on for many years, that we, we go over it from beginning to end every fall, as we develop the guidelines anew for the current year, but they reflect our, our values and commitments, and so, and they have been discussed at length in the finance subcommittee, and so our lack of questions to the document at this moment reflects the amount of work that has gone into the document, not, not a lack of commitment to it or interest. We, we need to appoint the Massachusetts Association of School Committees delegate, and we have a proposed vote. Is that, do we know where that is? Robin, is there sort of a piece of, yes? So, we have a nomination moved to appoint Ms. Charlebsky, the MASC delegate.
Sir.
Mr. Glover, is there any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. The superintendent's report, Mr. Ba.
So, I'm going to start with the second item on the superintendent report, which is the enrollment update. Again, these are not the certified numbers, but at the last school committee meeting, I had said that I would continue to update you until certification's done. As you can see, the enrollment as of September 28th is basically the same as it was two weeks ago. And we've gone up in a few areas. Kindergarten has gone up to 613, as you can see, and we've lost a few students, you know, who didn't show up, and we've identified where they are. So, we have a net change of two students over the enrollment where it was two weeks ago. So, it's still flushing out. And that takes me to the first item. There have actually been a growing number of questions that you may not have received yet, but questions that have been raised about students enrolling. We've received, actually, at this point, more than a handful of calls inquiring about the possibility of registering relatives, nieces, nephews, grandchildren displaced from their homes in Puerto Rico due to Hurricane Maria. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education issued guidance this Wednesday regarding this enrollment, and their guidance is below. They are reminding all districts in the Commonwealth that students who live with families or relatives due to loss of housing, including natural disaster, are covered under the McKinney-Vinto definition of homelessness, that the students may arrive lacking typical registration paperwork, birth certificates, prior school records. In the case of natural disaster, the schools are often destroyed or closed for long periods of time, and the lack of documentation is not a reason to delay registration. So, the few families who have called so far have indicated that their relatives can't yet leave, can't yet get a flight out, but are inquiring. And so, I wanted to share with, with the committee that this is some, we are likely to see a growth or some enrollments as a result of, of the Hurricane Maria, and we are prepared to register students without delay and provide students with whatever services they need upon arrival. A quick update on school visits. I've spent a lot of time in our BEEP program since the last school committee meeting with Vicky Milstein, visiting Lynch, Beacon, and Putterham. Putterham, I note, coincided with the school's parent and guardian back-to-school morning meeting, which was a wonderful event. Lots of excitement among children who started their day outside on the playground, and a lot of excitement for family members in classrooms, learning about, and hearing about all just the wonderful, incredible things that students do in BEEP and what they should look forward to over the course of the year. So, wonderful visits. I will add that, at the school committee's request, we, we are really diving into understanding the last 10 years of enrollment in BEEP and what future needs will be, and we'll be bringing initial information to subcommittees in the coming month, so late October, both at curriculum and finance to start. And really great work, and I thank Vicky Milstein for diving in both feet into the work and being really excited about, about the, the analysis. I've also been able to join folks at schools for extended visits at Heath, Ronco, Driscoll, and Lawrence over the past two weeks, as well as time at the high school. I want to add that last Tuesday, excuse me, this past Tuesday, not last Tuesday, this week, I joined Dr. Tolu Darr at Driscoll for the school faculty meeting, and it was a wide range of important information. It was an informational meeting, but it was a meeting where there was, you could see the excitement, the spirit, and the energy of the Driscoll team, and it's really worth, worth noting. There was a faculty-wide energizer of rock, paper, scissor, went to one winner. I think Mr. Lummis is responsible for that, he stepped out for bringing that to the district. But what's really important is that, both in the faculty meeting and the time that Dr. Tolu Darr and I spent prior to the faculty meeting, visiting classrooms, there's just such high energy, innovative teaching, strong collaboration, and so much excitement, the excitement is really palpable throughout the Driscoll school. So, very exciting, and I wanted to, to share that with you. We also hosted our first superintendent's meeting with parent leaders last week, September 20th, and this is a monthly gathering we hold with PTO presidents and school council co-chairs from all schools, and it's a really important part of our work, keeping families informed of district priorities work, and for me to hear directly from families' concerns, challenges, and celebrations in each of our schools. Last week at school committee, I introduced Jeanette Lindor as our new steps to success coordinator, and with Ms. Lindor's hire, I wanted to bring everyone back to a summary that the public schools at Brookline now has eight full-time employees working directly with our steps to success students. In addition to Ms. Lindor, these positions include four elementary program advisors supporting students who attend devotion, Lawrence, Lincoln, and peer schools. The positions also include three program advisors working directly with students attending Brookline High School. With Ms. Lindor now coordinating and supervising services across the schools in our district, we expect to see really very consistent and improved supports for students across the district. I want to note for the committee that, to support this structure, this is an increase of funding, of PSB funding of nearly 25% over last year's budget allocation, so it's a significant commitment of resources. Deputy Superintendent Nicole Gittens and I believe this is the right structure and the right level of supports for our students, and Ms. Gittens will be working closely with Ms. Lindor as she transitions into this very, into this new and very important leadership role.
May I ask you a question specifically about this?
Sure.
Is it still true that steps to success works solely with housing, public housing students?
Yes.
Is there any thought at this point of having them extend their coverage to students who, low-income students who are not in public housing?
It's a question that's been raised, it's a question that Ms. Charlebsky raised, raised as the school committee representative, it's, it's an ongoing conversation. I think important right now is for us to, is to focus on really strengthening and the work that we are doing with students currently served before we think about expansion, but it is an active question that a lot of people are asking and considering. I shared a brief, not a brief, a flyer attached to this update with some details about our annual staff professional development day, which have now been confirmed. Jamie Almasan from the Equity Collaborative will be coming to Brookline to lead a presentation titled Courageous Listening: Using Listening to Interrupt Implicit Bias. He also plans on making the presentation interactive in the BHS auditorium, so I am both thrilled and fascinated to see how that will work, and it will follow with breakout sessions at the high school for teams of educators throughout the PSB working with a follow-up. So, a very exciting day. In addition to this, to the PD Day, Mr. Almasan will, will provide onsite coaching as well as professional learning for district leaders in the coming months, and it goes without saying that we are grateful, the district and I are grateful to the Brookline Education Foundation for their generous financial support of this professional development day and the work. And lastly, we have a gift of music to the Performing Arts Department from the Brookline Education Foundation, and I'm going to read this word for word. The Performing Arts Department of the Public Schools of Brookline, under the leadership of K-12 Curriculum Coordinator Kenny Kozel, has been awarded the Brookline Education Foundation's 35th Anniversary Gift. Throughout the year, students will benefit from a gift of music. World-renowned composer and conductor Jim Papalas will, has been commissioned to create original songs with and for Brookline students, K through 12, that come from, embody, and represent the spirit of Brookline schools. Jim will work with every K-5 elementary general music class to create a song for every grade. These songs will become part of Brookline's K-5 Performing Arts repertoire and curriculum. He will also collaborate with 612 Chorus Orchestra Band Guitar Ukulele Music Production and General Music Classes and compose a musical piece. The world premiere event conducted by Jim Papalas will take place on January 9th and 10th, 2018, at the All-Town Choral Concert at the BHS Auditorium at 7:00 PM, open to the public, so save the dates. And congratulations to our entire Performing Arts Department for this great recognition and honor, well-deserved, and again, thank you to the Brookline Education Foundation for their continuous and very generous support of our schools and our students.
So, Superintendent Ba, I really want to commend you for adding whatever services are needed, if we do get children that come from the hurricane, and know that it could well be that children will be sent up here to live with relatives they may not know well without their immediate family, and so it may be that not only will the children need support, but the staff may need support if, if the numbers do come. So, thank you for that.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you very much for your report, Mr. Superintendent. We have subcommittee reports, such as they are. We're missing some chairs, but Ms. Schreiner-Oldham, do you have a report from the finance subcommittee? Be on what we've already done tonight?
No, so, the finance subcommittee, we've already reviewed what we had discussed at the last meeting. The next meeting is on October 16th.
Thank you. I will give a very brief, again, report for the absent chair of the Capital Improvements Subcommittee, which is to say that the, we have an upcoming Capital Improvement Subcommittee meeting on the afternoon, 4 o'clock in the afternoon of, of Tuesday, October 10th, and in addition to the, the presentation up on the sixth floor on the third, upcoming on the third, I will also mention what I omitted earlier in our calendar, which is bright and early at 8 o'clock tomorrow morning on the first floor, I suppose, or here maybe, in this room, I'm not sure, there is a, in this room, there is a, the first meeting of the fall of the Brookline High School Expansion Building Committee, very exciting. Ms. Scott, oh, yes. School Committee, right, it'll be here. Ms. Scott.
Well, the curriculum committee met on September 19th, and we spent some time talking informally with both Nadine Ekstrom, our interim senior director of teaching and learning, and Meg Mancini, Mancini or Mancini?
Mancini.
Mancini, our new senior director of programs. Both of them talked about their backgrounds, what they've been, and what they've been doing since they arrived here. They spoke about visiting the schools, talking with principals and teachers, and thinking about issues like understanding the achievement gap and addressing it, and the work that principals are doing to identify excellent instructional practice. All in all, it looks as if the year ahead will be both busy and interesting for the two of them as well as for us. It was, they were very, very open in talking about what they had seen and what impressed them, and I think they will be people who it will be a pleasure to work with. Our next curriculum meeting will be Wednesday, October 18th at 8:30 a.m. We will be discussing the K to 5 time allocations and issues around... We will be discussing the K to 5 time allocations and issues around recess. We also may begin to discuss what we, as a system, should be looking for in classroom instructional practice, something the principals and staff have been discussing. Our other option is to discuss the curriculum aspects of homeschooling, which is something that has come up. Whether we will actually do that on the agenda depends on when policy is going to be discussing it, because they're the ones that really have to look at that program. Normally, in October, I would expect us to discuss MCAS data, but the MCAS data is not available until October 24th, so we'll put that off to our November meeting.
Could you just repeat the date and time of that meeting?
The date and, the next one, October 18th at 8:30 AM.
And that's here?
It's in the conference room at the end of the hall.
Okay.
The, Ms. Charlofsky's not here to give a government relations report, and so we will await her sharing that with us at our next school committee meeting. And Mr. Chang is not here to update us on policy. Yes?
I'm preparing to do the policy if you're interested.
Wonderful, the policy report. Ms. Schreiner, Oldham.
So there are quite a number of policies that are being reviewed or will be reviewed this fall by the policy subcommittee. And so the first policy that we've been spending a lot of time on for a long time, and as long as I've been on school committees since last January, is the wellness policy. And the wellness policy, as it stands now, there's been a lot of discussion recently since the start of school about recess. The policy does contain a portion for recess, it's 20 minutes for recess for K through 8. We are waiting at this stage for feedback from the principals on scheduling. We had hoped that that would come over the summer, but because of other demands that were during those workshop days that they had with the principals, between our last meeting and the next meeting, there was going to be feedback from the principals about scheduling and the feasibility of having that recess, in particular with the middle school grades. And so that's with the wellness policy. Also, some of the new aspects of the wellness policy will also impact field trips, and that the field trip policy is one that the policy subcommittee is going to be reviewing as well, and just the recognition that the wellness policy will have impact on other policies is on the committee's mind and is being incorporated in those different policies. We also reviewed the draft of the meal charges policy, and there was a lot of discussion about the, currently, there is an outstanding balance. We're not, I'm not sure what the current balance is, but when Ms. Dunn began, there was a balance of $75,000, and as part of the new meal charges policy, there is, there is more room for, there's going to be a piloted program where the service workers, the food service workers, will be able to ask if there is a low balance on a student's account, that they will be trained on how to broach that subject with the student. And there's a distinction between students that are on free and reduced lunch, and that will not be, they would never be asked that, it will not show up that they had a negative balance. This is something, we have a lot of, a number of families in the district who just carry low balances on their account, just because they're not aware or they haven't been paying attention to it. And so this is another mechanism that staff has advised or has recommended would help with this, and it's also an opportunity to kind of incorporate financial literacy into the district, or not into the district, but it's another way that we can teach financial literacy. So that's with respect to the meal charges policy. The upcoming meeting, which will be on October 4th at 8:30 AM, will be reviewing the student activity policy and also the policies on discipline attendance and field trips.
Thank you very much, and that meeting is on the, in room 111, I think, on the first floor, on 8:30 this coming Wednesday.
So it starts there, because the wellness committee is meeting at the same time as the policy subcommittee, so the policy subcommittee is starting their meeting with the wellness committee, I believe, and then will adjourn to, I believe, upstairs to deal with all the non-wellness policy issues that were, that were just outlined.
All right, so it's a multi, multi-roamed meeting, starting on the first floor and finishing up on the fifth floor. All right, are there additional, any questions about policy? Are there additional liaison updates? Yes, Ms. Wolfdicker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the one that I have is from the Brookline High School Innovation Fund, the, which was formerly the 21st Century Fund. They and the PTO and the Brookline Education Foundation are working closely together this year to sort of help new families and old families kind of understand the three organizations. Back-to-school night is tonight, there's a night for freshman families coming up as well, that I think they're advertising pretty heavily throughout the school, just so that new families can kind of feel welcome there. And so I do have a one-pager here, which I'm happy to distribute to the committee, because I think it does a really nice job of explaining kind of what each organization does and how they fit in a complimentary way. The sort of the highlights being that the Brookline Innovation Fund supports innovative curriculum development at BHS by funding faculty-led initiatives and creating courses, lead programs, conduct research. Then there's a whole set of things about the Brookline Education Foundation, which operates K through 12 and focuses a lot on professional development, professional learning, and sort of helping, helping teams of teachers access other opportunities for professional development outside of the regular budget framework. And the PTO is really focused on the homeschool relationship and supporting both teachers, administrators, and families kind of in daily life, and really helping think about a number of community-building events for the whole school. So anyway, I thought it was a very helpful one-pager, this question comes up a lot, and so I'm happy to send it around. But it's something that they're developing and they're proud of, and it's sort of a spirit of collaboration, and specifically also thinking about being an important part of getting feedback from folks at various parts of the high school community on the building project. So that'll be very useful as well.
Thank you. Are there other things happening that people want to report on? And do we have any new or old business to take up? So going once, hearing none, I hereby adjourn the September 28th meeting of the school committee. Thank you very much.